Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor Javelin. Councilman Russo. Councilman Tinsley. Councilman Leving.
Under additions, deletions, modifications. Under deletions, we have to change the presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report, a word we were scheduled to next month, April 3, 2014, at our council meeting. Are there motion for that? Second in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next up, we have items of resident interest in board committee reports.
I think that under additions, deletions, modifications, that we might want to consider calling the...
Do you do that when you get to the council?
Okay, we'll do that. That's fine.
All right, thank you. Items of resident interest in board committee reports, I'll start with David.
Well, this weekend, Val and Isles had the Going Green event, which I got to attend. It was pretty exciting. They had asked me, I was very honored, they asked me to bring my Chevy Volt over and actually be one of the presenters, which I agreed to do. Unfortunately, on my other thing that I would report, except I wasn't able to attend it, I got into an accident with my Volt in Dubaire Beach going to the League of Sins meeting. So I can't give you a report on the League of Sins meeting because I didn't get there until about 10 minutes left in the meeting.
It didn't blow up?
It didn't blow up, no. It was very superficial and very minor damage, but I do have to thank the people at Schumacher Motive because at the last moment, this crazy person calls them up and said, "Can I borrow a Volt for a day, and on Saturday?" And I explained the situation to them, and they agreed to lend me this 2014 Volt, which I had to explain, "Why does your Volt have new car stickers all over it?" And I had to explain, "Well, I had a little slight accident, and this is not my Volt." So if you've ever seen that movie, I think Pink Panther movie, where Inspector Clouseau asks the gentleman if the dog bites, and then the gentleman says no, and then Inspector Clouseau cuts the dog, of course the dog bites him, and I ask him, "I thought you said your dog didn't bite, but that's not my dog, so that's not my Volt." So with that, I'm sorry, next month I'll give you a good League of Sins report. Thank you, mercy.
How could you go after that one? Since our last meeting, we attended the PBYAA girls softball brand opening. We also attended the PBYAA baseball brand opening ceremony, which was always fun to attend to see all of our young athletes all get ready for the next year, the next season. Our mayor and I attended the Palm Beach Gardens Police Awards Ceremony. I want to congratulate all of the winners, which were not only police, they were also civilians. That is one of the best award ceremonies because we get to see people in action doing things that go above and beyond the call of duty, and that's our police, that's also our civilians, residents, all alike, that come together and do something good for our community. And that was just a great award, I know that it was mentioned in the paper as well. I also want to congratulate Alexis, who won the nomination for Officer of the Year. She also won a lot of other awards, you will go into, because we'll be here all night, she did such a great job. But I do want to congratulate her on behalf of all of us. I attended the Treasure Coast Regional Planet Council meeting, which we're now having every month because of the size of the schedule, they're now doing it monthly versus every other month. They added an item on the agenda, which was where every councilperson describes, talks about issues that their city is facing, potential challenges for the future, and that's actually, it became a very good item, I'm sorry, they added, because we all can hear and share stories and learn from each other as far as what the future may bring and how that can affect each other. So that was a great meeting, and I'm glad they added that to the agenda. In addition to that, I attended Congressman Markey's job forum, which was held in our city last week. Correct? And of course, we all attended the Honda Classic, which was another great success. The weather was perfect, minus the fog the one time, but I think they persevered through the fog. And we had tons of publicity for our city, which really was a great benefit for us. And of course, I saw the additional economic benefit that occurred as well for all of our local businesses. And I know that we all worked hard, volunteers, everybody together to make that a great success, including the Honda. I truly appreciate everybody's efforts to help in that regard. And last, and more important, not more, but as important, this month, one of the best part of this month is I got to meet a lot of residents, and I was able to speak to and listen to a lot of people. It's great to be able to get out there and to hear from so many people. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes, as you well know, the Honda Classic was very successful, and you also know, I sit on the board of the Honda Classic. It was very exciting, I mean, the attendance exceeded 190,000. I'd like to thank our police department, fire, for all the hard work they did out there. It was a great event. I apologized earlier to the Charables saying I couldn't attend their debate because I was at a Honda dinner on Tuesday night, and it was very exciting. I got to meet the new president of Honda, who just, in fact, took over the day before, Mr. Uwamata, I guess Mr. Uwamora retired, and now this is the new, the new president. And speaking with Steve Marikawa, who was our local, their representative for Honda, we seemed to be on a good course, and hopefully, within the next year, we could sit down and negotiate an extension to that. I spoke to Joel Page from managing partner PGA National, they're very much interested in extending their contract. This event has grown so successful, as you know, we have the top eight golfers in the world, but a lot of other interesting things happened that really are good for the city. When this event first started, years ago, at PGA National, it was televised two hours on Golf Channel on Thursday and Friday, and three hours on NBC on Saturday and Sunday. Now, they televise it four hours, I'm sorry, five hours during the week, from 1:00 to 5:00, on 1:00 to 1:00, 6:00, okay? And on weekends, they do it 1:00 to 3:00, and then NBC takes over. So the coverage that we get is just phenomenal. And we also have the Bear Trap on the Golf Channel, one of the others. In fact, I was talking to Dan Hicks, who was the, he's the NBC lead telecaster, and I thanked him for all the great work he had to say for our city, over the, you know, he talked about the tournament, the city, what a great place this is, and I'll tell you, the amount of exposure we get for our city with that event is phenomenal. And obviously, we don't pay nothing for that, so it's really kind of neat. The Honda has really grown, and hopefully, we're gonna, we have two more years left on the contract, and then hopefully, you know, six, eight, 10 more, and I think we will. PGA Tour wants to have it here, I believe Honda's on the same page, and PGA National, so. Not to mention, I believe the numbers will again be in excess of $2 million being donated to the local community, so that's a great thing. The other thing, now, I want to just switch gears a little bit, and you know, we talked about Western development, we're gonna talk about a lot of things here, but I was made aware, and I discussed with our city manager, that there seems to be in motion at the state legislature. I've heard that they are allowing to try and put some Western ad enclave out there, and you know, basically, if it gets adopted in the legislature, it's basically done. So I would like to try and set up a meeting of all the North County cities, obviously, sooner than later, within the next week, maybe the mayor could attend, or if he couldn't, I'd be happy to be there. But to put all the North County cities together, and I think we need to bind together, and obviously, we have an armed lobbyist, but I think all the cities need to come together. As you well know, well, I know Eric knows, you know, I know that everybody, there's talk how, how we gotta get rid of some of those old timers that are here, but some of the good things about being an old timer that's here, I remember when we had the North County planning forum, and we planned North Palm Beach County and what we wanted to see, and all the cities got together, and they, we basically said, "We didn't want to have Western development." Well, now, we need to get together and see how we're gonna be able to stop what's going on, because we all know, there's a lot in motion, and we need to stop it before, okay, it gets to be where we can't stop it. So I'd like to get a meeting together, if everybody agrees, I'd like to have the city manager try to call the other cities and try and put together a meeting with their mayor, if not, an elected official and a staff member, to sit down and talk about what we could do. Maybe we can also get updated. I don't believe they filed, the last I heard, last week, they haven't filed yet, but I heard that they were going to. So this is not something we can sit back, because Western development will, it will change the whole character of North Palm Beach County. So this is something that we desperately have to go after. Then the other thing, and I'm pretty sure the city manager is gonna report on this in a little bit, and I was going to PalmBeachPost.com, and there's an article how the tournament group is suing the city and so forth, and here's what I would look. Okay, that's an issue, but the issue that we have, that was exposed, that our ordinance didn't conform to state law, we need to have a charter review committee, okay, put together. Now, my only purpose tonight to bring it up is because I wanted to get on the next agenda, which probably will go at the bottom agenda, and I don't want to get accused of anything, and I'm obviously not running for anything, but I'd like to have a discussion of our charter, which is our constitution, and what we're gonna do about it, and how we're gonna fix it. Term limits is only one part of it, and if this group is successful, yeah, they can get term limits on the ballot, but how about everything else? There's a lot of issues, and just so the record reflects, our last charter review commission looked at term limits, they looked at direct election of the mayor, they looked at districting, and that's why we sit with the way we do today. It wasn't our decision, it was their decision, they all sat down, they put it together, the council did not attend to any of the meetings, and basically, they came back and made the recommendation that we don't do term limits, we don't do direct election of the mayor, and that's why we're at. But that was a number of years ago, the city has changed, and I think it needs to be looked at again, so I'd like to see that put on next month's agenda with the council, whoever it is, they're gonna be sitting up here, and we can have a discussion, because I would like to see this thing go forward the right way and not piecemealed, and as we all know, we tried to make changes to the charter a year ago, and it didn't work. We just need to get it back on track and get our charter into where we need it to be for the year 2014.
I'm in absolute agreement with that.
So we're putting on the agenda, I don't know where it goes on the agenda, if it goes on the bottom, wherever it belongs, but at least I'm saying it ends.
Okay, anybody else have a suggestion?
Actually, I was gonna bring up the same thing under items for council discussion.
That would've been at the end of the meeting.
It would've been.
Okay, enough, enough. Okay, so we're gonna have discussion on the charter next month from the agenda, and then Western growth, we want to set up meetings with the northern cities, if you can put that together in the next week or so, and make the calls. We all agree with that?
Aye.
Okay. And then you can elaborate that on your city manager report if you want to in a minute. Eric, you're up.
I'm glad you brought that up, Joe, because I agree with you, I think we do need to look at our charter again, I think it was 10 years ago, and we did it, something like that.
13?
13, yeah. And you're absolutely right, they made the recommendations, we followed the recommendations. Times have changed, let's see what they have to say again. Okay, as far as Western development goes, do you remember a report called the Benson Report? Remember that? I'm trying to...
Name sounds familiar.
That's familiar, isn't it? That report is still around, and that talked about Western development, and that was one of the, one of the reports that we used, basically, for the cities in the north end to point to when it came to Western development. We should find that report. I may even have it somewhere in my office, but if I do, I'll dig it up, and I'll, it was very supportive of our present position when it comes to Western development. Speaking of Western development, I did attend the NPO meeting last week, and there were about 30 residents, 30 or more residents of PGA National that came, a lot of whom spoke up, and, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Spoke up and impressed the board. I think that a lot of boards felt the same way that we do, and I made a comment based on what you, what you asked me to do last time, at the last council meeting, and a lot of the residents have encouraged, and I think that they were very appreciative of the fact that we're supporting them. So I just want you to know that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, just a couple of issues, a couple of events, actually. Palm Beach Gardens High School is having the EC roast this Saturday night, and some of the roasters are gonna be, Burt Reynolds is gonna be there, don't know how clean that's gonna be with all those guys up there, but Pastor Tom Mullins from Price Fellowship and some others, Karen Marcus is gonna be there as well, so that should be a great fundraiser for the school. Also, next Thursday, Food Fest Mania is gonna be held on the, in the parking lot at Palm Beach Gardens High School, it's all the food trucks. So they're starting to do this kind of all over the county in different months, and I know in St. Clair's at the Marty Bra a couple weeks ago, the food trucks were there on the opening night Thursday, and I think they sold out of food, all 10 or 12 trucks that were there, so it seems like they have a gathering of following, all different foods, different varieties, different vendors or restaurants, so. Next Thursday is from 4:30 to 8:30 in the Palm Beach Gardens High School parking lot, all the vendors will be set up, will have tables and stuff, and some of the proceeds will go to the high schools, so that should be a nice event for them as well. And finally, next Wednesday, the Historical Society, Don Kieseluski Jr. will be speaking on behalf of P&amp;L and telling the story of Power in Florida. So that's the next speaker, and that should be a good story to listen to. And that's all I have. Anybody else have any other items? We missed one. Okay, moving on.
Yes, I have a report. The first thing I bring to your attention, covered most of the issues regarding the Honda Classic, and just would like to, again, reiterate the point, a couple of points. One being that police and fire worked hand in hand with security over there, and they're getting by a command approach, and started here in a row, and just did a phenomenal job, both agencies. We had 47 emergency, medical emergencies that were responded to, and a number of other issues police officers had to handle, but they were very, very few compared to an event this size. And the reason that is, is that our two departments were organized or unified, and were very highly visible everywhere you turned. The response time was just unbelievable for medical emergencies, and the police chief tells the story how they had two individuals go down at the same time, and they were in a rescue unit, mom and away to hospital, within 10 minutes. The organizational skills and abilities that were displayed by both the police and fire department were unbelievable, and we received compliments from Bob Pulisic, the director of security at PGA National, and Erickson Lassica, which is a tour manager of all tournaments. And they said that we have, by far, the best security and the best medical response of any tournament that they go to. So I think that's a pretty good compliment for both police and fire departments. And the other point would be, as you know, we had talked at the last meeting, Charlotte Prudensky brought up our new marketing relationship, and part of that exposure that the city got was as a result of our negotiating more marketing with that. And one of the things that we did is we connected our website to theirs, and vice versa, and it's kind of interesting to see the hits for the first time we did this. We were visited by 35 countries, the most popular was, you would imagine, in cold places like Canada and the UK, but we also had hits from Malaysia, every one of the 50 states hit us, Massachusetts, Ohio, a lot from Chicago, wishing they were here, I'm sure. But this was the first year that we really expanded our partnership with the marketing of the city, and we look forward, and we've already had conversations, and looking forward to expanding the marketing of the city even more next year's time, so it's super successful. Thank you. Relative to the lawsuit that Councilman Russo brought up, it was served this afternoon, and at that time, we received the lawsuit, sat down with our city attorney, and we had some discussions on the language. And certainly, when looking at the lawsuit as in any lawsuit, there's always two sides to the story, and that can always be debated and argued, particularly in court of law, even a attorney's office. But we got to talking about it and looking at it and saying, well, thinking about it, saying, well, instead of looking at a lawsuit, and given the fact that, to my knowledge, no one has come here to this podium and asked you to change an ordinance, the lawsuit is mentioning that it takes 15% of registered voters in the last election in order to initiate a petition for a referendum for election by our ordinance, that they made the charter, but it's actually in an ordinance. Everyone makes that mistake sometimes, by thinking it's in the charter, but it's in, it's in the charter that you can do it, but the enabling legislation is in an ordinance. And the state statutes read that it's 10%, not 15. And thinking this whole idea back and forth, we thought maybe it would be best served to put an ordinance change together and bring it back to the council in April, for the council to talk about as to whether you desire to have the 15 or the 10. And you can discuss the availability and the access to the public, and what the public access is to the council, and to be enabled to petition their council and get a ballot on a referendum for citizens to vote on. So we're going to proceed to do that and bring it back in April for your all's consideration to go ahead and change the ordinance, or if it is so, certainly, you can pursue other means, but it seems to me like that would be the best course of action at this point.
When was that ordinance written?
1987.
And was the state requirement back then 15%? Do we know where it was back then? Did theirs change, and we didn't change ours, or?
I was trying to do some research on that today, and typically, the best way to do that, truthfully, is to be able to look at the annotated statutes, and I didn't have access to them today, but we're, I'm looking into it. I suspect that it was a holdover from, like I said, just outdated, being outdated ordinance. 166.031, I mean, the whole Powers Act was originally passed in 1973, which was significantly before the ordinance, but I don't know if that particular section would read the same way that it does now.
We can talk about it next month, but are there any other changes to the form that needs to be done, or is the form correct? It's just a percentage, 10 or 15%? Correct. Is that okay, we bring that back next?
I absolutely think we need to take care of this as soon as possible. I just wish that we would've been approached and handled this prior to hogging our legal system, we could've done it like they're doing right now. But I absolutely, I mean, they might have didn't hear this right away, but on the next agenda.
Please bring it back next meeting, and let's have a discussion on it, if we need to change it, we change it. Okay, thank you. Any other items? Okay. Next up, we have Thomas in the public.
I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I got an email from Vito DiFrancesco this morning, and I have an issue that I wanted to bring up regarding the baseball stadium, Project Robin. Sorry about that, but...
No, it's all right.
A confidentiality agreement has often been cited by the city regarding why so little information was given to the public regarding Project Robin. On February 25th, at a candidate debate forum, Councilmember Marcy Tinsley again stated the city had signed a confidentiality agreement on the stadium issue, and Vito requested a copy for the second time of the confidentiality agreement. He was again given a letter written by Giles, is that how you pronounce his name, Giles Kibby's?
Giles.
Okay, Giles, dated August 14th, 2013, 2013. Again, nothing signed by the council or by the city. Mr. DiFrancesco clarified with Ms. Tinsley that the agreement she referred to was not signed by the council, but by the city manager Ron Ferris. Every time Mr. DiFrancesco is asked for a copy of the agreement, he's only been given a copy of a letter dated August 14th, 2013, signed by Giles Kibby of the Houston Astros, nothing signed by the city. The letter that he's given, I might add, has no letterhead, no timestamp as to when it was received from the city, and nothing that makes it look official. I have a copy of that letter, I'm assuming you all have all seen it, but you know, it just, nothing that looks, makes it look official. I'm not sure how much clearer we can make it. We are looking for a copy of the confidentiality agreement signed between the city or city officials, the council members, whomever, and baseball officials. We want to know exactly what date this confidentiality agreement was signed, and what dates it was in effect. The delay or inability to provide this makes one wonder. Does a confidentiality agreement exist? Is the city delaying giving us a copy of the signed confidentiality agreement because of who may have signed it? Does it have something to do with the fact that there's an election around the corner, and maybe that's not why, or that's why it's not being provided? Maybe there's nothing to hide. If so, why aren't we given a copy of the confidentiality agreement? This is exactly the type of evasive behavior and sidestepping that's made many of us wonder about trusting the council. Please don't sidestep the issue. You know, you know what we're looking for. Does it exist or doesn't it? I believe the Post said it best, it's time for a change. Thank you.
Ruth, can you give me your address, please?
My address is 184 Bent Tree Drive. I have that copy of the letter if you want to see.
Please respond.
You can get onto the clerk, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I haven't seen the clerk. Just so I can be clear, it's actually not a confidentiality agreement, and what you have been given, what Mr. DiFrancesco has been given, is what the city has. It's dated August 14th, and it's not a letterhead because it was sent from two different, it was signed and sent by two different entities. They don't have joint letterhead. And what you have a copy of is exactly what they sent us, and it's signed by Giles Kibby, and it's signed by Matthew Schuber, Giles Kibby representing Houston Astros LLC, and Matthew Schuber representing the Rogers Blue Jays Baseball Partnership. It's dated August 14th, and they asked that certain items, and in accordance with, are listed in the letter, certain things would be maintained confidential in accordance with Chapter 288, for Statute 288075, which is, deals with economic development, and we've talked about that a lot when baseball was on the radar, and that was being discussed with people. Because when the BDB brings something to an economic development agency, which is specific members of the city staff, sometimes it includes me, sometimes it does not, and we are required, until it is disclosed, once they, once they ask for this, to maintain it as confidential until it's disclosed, or one year. And there are certain details that remain confidential until it reaches its conclusion, and it can be extended for an additional, I believe it's either six months or a year. I used to have the thing almost memorized, beyond the original, I think it's an additional year if they ask for it, because once you reach conclusion of the economic development, or you do a development deal, or there's some kind of contractual obligation, or commitment between the city and whoever the economic, the interested party is, be it a corporation that's relocating a baseball stadium, or another business, or anything else, just like when Entire Kingdom came here, they called it Project Gold, and there were certain things that were maintained confidential in accordance with the statute, because otherwise, if people, if you allow, if you don't maintain it confidential, it allows certain people to potentially profiteer. They could go buy a key piece of property, which would potentially be able to hold the interested party hostage, or prevent it from coming, which could negatively impact the city financially, or preclude that development. So that's why that is done that way. They submitted that letter in accordance with the statute, and then we were obligated under the law to maintain it confidential for that period of time. Eventually, it became disclosed because the open house occurred, everything started moving along with baseball. And then we started sharing the information also in accordance with the statute and in accordance with Chapter 119.
So were there any other agreements out there?
In what period of time? That's what I'm wondering. What period of time?
We have the agreement as of the March letters. Are there any other letters that were signed when it came to a conclusion that it wasn't going to happen at the end of December, that we were done? There's no termination letter? There's nothing else? Okay.
Ma'am, her answer, this letter's dated August.
August, yeah, 13th.
Yeah, you just said March. I mean, that's what we're wondering.
No, I just said when it came to resolution at the end of December.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just answered.
But go ahead and give that to the clerk, please, if you don't mind. Do you have an extra copy of that?
See, the problem is, is what they were looking for was a typical confidentiality, you know, like if you had a business transaction, you'd have a signed confidentiality agreement with both parties. But that doesn't exist here because that's not the way it's done, because they already have the, let's say, the law on the other side, so you don't have to sign it both ways.
Like, we can't, we can't do that.
What he's actually looking for is we don't have.
Okay, that's just what, that wasn't stated at the forum and said, or they, it was hard to state everything in two minutes, which was the only amount of time that we had to describe it. We had a specific amount of time to answer a question, two minutes, and you can't describe this entire thing, unfortunately. I wish I could, but you can't describe the whole story in two minutes when it is very detailed like this.
And just to be clear, in fairness to the council and the city staff, this, all this really is confusion in vernacular. Nobody's trying to hide anything or anything untoward. And to be clear, on March 5th, when this was sent again to Mr. DiFrancesco, the city staff, in the email, it says, "Under floor statute 288-075, once the team requests confidentiality, we are statutory required to abide by that request. Once again, attached is confidentiality document on file with the city which has been provided to you on December 12th and February 27th." We provided the document two times before, and this is all we had that was responsive to the request. So nobody was trying to hide anything, and it was just a matter of trying, a misunderstanding in terminology, is all.
Okay, so there is no confidentiality agreement signed between the city and the baseball people, right?
Essentially, it's that letter that we get.
There's an agreement signed from the teams, and then we have to abide by the statute, which is the confidentiality. So we are, we have to abide by the Florida statute, and the teams had to provide that document, which discusses, they signed the confidentiality document that you're referring to, and we have the Florida statute that we have to abide by. Those are the two sides.
There won't be any other issues with this in other cities, because it's all out in the open now. So move somewhere, and let's get in the air, and we'll move on. Thank you, Ruth.
Michael Perigee, 277 Sedona Way. I actually can't believe that I'm listening to this term limits argument. I have seen multiple emails from James Deluie to the city, to the city attorney or city staff, about the fact that there's a discrepancy between the Palm Beach Gardens requiring 15% and the rest of the state requiring 10%. Like you're saying, this just brought, and that a lawsuit needs to be filed. I've put thousands of my own money, thousands of my money, with James Deluie as the coach here. We've had people running around the city getting signatures. How many of you guys have not heard that we require 15% more than all we have at cities in the rest of the state is beyond our, it's shocking to me. I've seen the emails between the city and James Deluie, and I've been part of the committee. And the fact that we have to file a lawsuit to get something done around the city is a big problem. It shouldn't have had to go this far. Now, all of a sudden, you guys are willing to accept what the rest of the state. It just feels like the process is made so, made prohibitive for someone to be able to make a change in regards to require 15% more than the rest of the cities. Why is it so hard? Second thing, turn to the charter change. You talk about this charter change that a committee recommended to the council. Where was the council? They just blindly took the recommendation and sent it out to the city, and sure somebody reviewed it. There were things in the charter that the residents didn't like. For example, the city manager was no longer, needed, no longer going to have an annual review. I've heard the excuse that, well, if a meeting didn't follow the exact annual date, that would cause a problem. Why couldn't the language be written a year and then to the next meeting? So the fact that the language couldn't be, couldn't still contain the city manager being required to go through an annual review, people didn't like that, and that's why it was rejected. And my third statement is, I strongly recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement with the police. They haven't received a raise in over five years. It doesn't require a tax increase. The trees in the parking lot have been done multiple times. There's money being spent on other items, and the police have not been given a raise in our city in over five years. We should be ashamed of ourselves, and I strongly recommend that you approve the collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheldon Ridge.
Thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the council.
Name and address, please.
Sheldon Ridge, 1 Sheldon Ridge Circle, Palm Beach Gardens. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the council. There's been a tremendous amount of negative politicking going on over this election, and quite frankly, I've talked to many people about this, a lot of people are very sick about that. It seems like there's so many things being brought up about the city that I almost have to ask some of the people that are bringing up all this negative press to maybe think about moving out of the city at this point in time. This is a tremendous city. I moved here 10 years ago. I love this city. I appreciate all the time and effort that all of you on the council put in to running the city as well as you do, and it truly is appreciated. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know.
Thank you. I have no other cards, so we're going to move on from Congresswoman Public.
Okay. I'd like to pull one item from the consent agenda, please. And that would be the item G, Resolution 19, 2014. So that would be an opportunity for the public to discuss this, and...
I have no cards on that, Marcy.
I just figured you could put it first on the agenda right after consent, just give an opportunity to discuss it, and you are the nominee for regard to that, so I figured it would be the right thing to do.
Okay, I've got a motion to move off Resolution 19, 2014.
Actually, let's move consent with the exception of item G.
Okay, we'll move consent with the exception of item G.
I'll move.
I'm moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Will the clerk please read the title, Resolution 19, 2014?
Resolution 19, 2014, a resolution of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving proposed State Road 710 New Line Highway, urban interchange at the intersection of North Lake Boulevard and State Road 710 providing an effective date for purposes.
Okay, I'll bring it back up for discussion.
Chairman, move item G, Resolution 19, 2014.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Withdraw your motions, please.
Withdraw my motion. Withdraw yourself.
You don't have to vote. You want to ask your, the vote.
Okay, got a motion, second. Let's have discussion.
I just wanted to put on the record, I put, actually made a copy of some information and goes along with what you guys have said in regards to water development and whatever. It's just information of what's already been approved and what is regarding residential and non-residential. It's the square footages that are already approved out there, and in addition to what Joe had said, we do have agricultural, all of the legislation that is out there, and we have to be very mindful and cognizant of that because we have, the county has received a proposal from Calery to increase the existing, for Calery to, for almost double the square footage of non-residential, and also almost double the amount of residential units. So I think, and we don't quote you on the exact numbers, but Calery is approved for approximately 3,000 units, and now there is a proposal that was currently, or just recently submitted for 6,500 units, which would be obviously doubling the residential units. So that is one of the reasons that we are all in favor of the opposition. And I mean, one opportunity for anyone else wanting to discuss that.
Something else I think we should probably discuss about that intersection is that there have been no fatalities there in the last three years, I think 10 minor accidents with injury. Compared to other intersections through this county, it actually is one of the safer ones.
George Webb's issue is that, is that there is development already approved there, and that this is going to be needed no matter what. I mean, and my issue is, is we need to sit down and figure out if there's another way. That's all. That's all. I believe, Marcy, I heard you say somewhere, we just want to get a seat at the table. I think that's the important thing. You know, we want to be a part of the solution. And I guess that's, you know, our residents are pretty much concerned with what's going on out there. But the bottom line is, is that we need to have input into this. And if George is right, and that's the only way, well, you know, it's going to wind up happening no matter what we do. But I think we need to fight it as much as we can because we don't know, you know, you see what you can hope for.
Absolutely. And additionally, there are multiple ways of doing this that isn't going to affect our Puget National, where there's 5,000 homes adjacent to Pomostor, which I think DOT has done in the past, has put some thought when there has been opposition, they've put some thought into it, and have come up with creative ways to do things in a very thoughtful manner, I think we can do that in this respect too, as long as we all work together towards the common goal.
Okay. And Ron, will this be put somewhere on our website or attached to the resolution or something, so we can have that information on that?
Certainly do that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you. I want additional guarantees on the following cases. Ordinance 3, 2014, second reading and adoption, rezoning property to the general commercial CG1. Ordinance 5, 2014, second reading and adoption, North Lake Sunoco. Resolution 11, 2014, North Lake Sunoco. This means that the city council is required by a basis decision on the evidence contained and the record of its proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, any documents presented during the hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be prevented in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or you wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to testify this evening on any of those cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in all due diligence?
I do.
Thank you. First up, ordinance 2, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 2, 2014, an ordinance of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to its comprehensive development plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Section 163.3187 ex. Palm Beach Gardens statutes, pursuant to application number CPSS-13-11-000005, which provides for an amendment to the city's future land use map by designating one parcel of real property comprising approximately 1.68 acres in size, more or less, as C commercial. Such parcel being located generally at the northeast corner of North Lake Boulevard and I-95, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing, providing the transmittal to DEO, providing the conflicts clause, the severability clause, and authority to quantify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a signed sheet at the front desk for anyone who would like additional information from the DEO.
Thank you, Patty. Now, open the bubble here, and has anything changed since the original presentation?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's been no changes since first reading on both ordinance 2 and companion ordinance 3. Just as a reminder, these are really housekeeping items to ensure that we're consistent with state law. These parcels were recently annexed into the city as required by law. We are required to provide a city land use and zoning designation. We're not changing any intensity. We had a previous designation of commercial in the county, and all we're doing is assigning a comparable designation for the city.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Chairman, move ordinance 2, 2014 on second reading and adoption.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Next up, ordinance 3, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 3, 2014, an ordinance of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the city Palm Beach Gardens consisting of one parcel of real property totaling 1.36 acres in size, more or less, located at the northeast corner of North Lake Boulevard and I-95, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city zoning designation of general commercial CG1, providing that the zoning map of the city Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to quantify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Another one in the public hearing, you can ask for any expertise since first reading?
None.
None? Okay. Anything changed? We've already had discussion on that, we're good. Any other questions, staff, on this ordinance? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Chairman, move ordinance 3, 2014 on second reading and adoption.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Next up, ordinance 5, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 5, 2014, an ordinance of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the city of Palm Beach Gardens consisting of one parcel of real property totaling 1.22 acres in size, more or less, located at the northwest corner of North Lake Boulevard and I-95, to be known as the Unlimited Auto Wash PUD, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city zoning designation and Plan Unit Development PUD, overlaid or an underlying zoning designation of general commercial CG1, providing that the zoning map of the city of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to quantify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Resolution 11, 2014 is a companion item to ordinance 5, 2014, and will require council action. Resolution 11, 2014, a resolution of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the site plan for the Unlimited Auto Wash Plan Unit Development PUD, located at the northwest corner of North Lake Boulevard and I-95, as more particularly described herein, to allow an additional car wash lane and to add a canopy to the existing car wash, providing a waiver, providing conditions, approval, providing effective date for other purposes.
Another one in the public hearing, ask for any expertise since first reading?
None.
None? Okay. Any presentation or any additional information on this?
Yes, thank you. There have been, again, no changes since first reading. This is a rezoning for the north west corner of I-95 and North Lake Boulevard to CG1, and the request and the modifications to the site plan is to add for an additional drive through lane for a car wash. But there have been no changes since first reading. It's passed over and recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Chairman, move ordinance 5, 2014 on second reading and adoption.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Open the public hearing for Resolution 11, 2014. Any expertises?
None.
None? Thank you. Staff, you have a view on that? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Chairman, move Resolution 11, 2014.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Next up, Resolution 14, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution 14, 2014, a resolution of the city council of the city Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and ratifying a hearing with the Police Benevolent Association of Police Officers, Sergeants, and Communications Operators employed by the city's Police Department for fiscal years 2013 to 2016, authorizing the mayor and the city manager to execute said agreement, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Another one in the public hearing, you can ask for a presentation of the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Cheryl Stewart, HR Administrator, for the record. The city and the PBA bargaining teams actually began contract negotiations in September of 2012, and resolved numerous non-economic issues for a one-year contract that was through September 30th of 2013, and immediately resumed bargaining in July of 2013. And by the end of the fifth bargaining session, both teams worked really hard to resolve the remaining economic issues, primarily of salary and pension, for a new three-year contract that's actually effective 10/1/2013 through September 30th of 2016. And we were informed that the PBA voted 65 to 5 overwhelmingly in favor of the And we were informed that the PBA voted sixty-five to five, allowing the favor of ratification on February fourteenth of this year, which is before council for consideration this Primarily, the proposed salary plan that's contained in this new contract would implement a new salary plan for all positions in the bargaining unit, bringing them more in alignment with what the current local municipalities are with comparable agencies, and addresses numerous internal pay issues and compression, and it also takes into consideration that the salaries have not been adjusted for budgeted increases for four years, four budgeted fiscal years. The employees would receive in the second and third years of the contract, not the current year that we're in, there's no budgeted salary intact for this current fiscal year, they would receive two-and-a-half percent increase to base salary effective ten-one, two thousand and fourteen, and ten-one, two thousand and fifteen, and then the employees would be slotted into the new pay plan, and there would be some adjustments individually for those salary changes that would occur, for a total cost of the plan of approximately one million dollars over the course of the whole contract. Regarding pension, what the pension provisions in this contract provides for, it brings forward the economic, the pension reform changes that were done in response to the economic downturn in the last contract, which included the reduction of the multiplier from three-and-a-half percent to two point seven-five percent, reducing the maximum benefit from a hundred to seventy-five percent of the average final, final monthly earnings. And it also continues the definition of compensation of pensionable earnings to be for base pay only. What would occur, though, is in the third year of the contract, there'd be a couple of adjustments in the third year, and that'd be, it changes the eligibility for normal retirement from age fifty-nine to fifty-five. In the prior contract, it was age fifty-two, so it makes an adjustment for that. It also addresses a couple of glitches with respect to the drop, the deferred retirement option plan, so that it would allow an employee to delay top entry until the employee has accrued the maximum benefit of the seventy-five percent of his overall annual earnings. Additionally, in the third year of the contract, the PBA has agreed to allow the city to use the excess chapter one-eighty-five premium tax revenue funds as of October first of two thousand and twelve in the amount of approximately five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which would reduce, help to reduce the city's annual contribution for a year. It's important to note that under the laws, those excess reserves are intended for additional benefits for the, for the members themselves, so that would help with that. Again, the, the total cost for the salary and these pension changes that have been summarized here over the three-year contract is approximately one point two million dollars, that's the one, approximately one for the salary, approximately two hundred thousand dollars for the pension modification that I summarized here. And again, we recommend approval because having this contract in place for three years continues those cost-saving measures, but it also allows us to plan for some anticipated workforce changes that we anticipate to occur in light of the fact that we're anticipating some retirements over the next few years, so it really is important in order for us to recruit and retain the best employees that we possibly can.
Any questions, staff, on this? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this?
Me.
Before, okay, before I close the public hearing, let's have some discussion, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to congratulate both our staff, our city manager, and our staff, and the police, the PBA staff. You know, this is something that unfortunately, we couldn't fix at the last time, and it needed to be fixed. And I just wanna, this, this was a great thing that everybody did, and everybody deserves the accolades. I wanna thank the, our police department, the men and women of our police department for being patient, and many who I've told, that I've said that we're gonna fix it, we're gonna work on it, and so forth, and, and I thank them for being patient. We didn't lose a lot of people when a lot of people weren't happy with the last one. I know myself, and I said it in that impasse hearing, that I wasn't, I thought the retirement age was a little rough for a police officer being fifty-nine. So we have a great department, they're out there every day protecting this city, making this city the safest, as we all have seen the, the results many times from the police chief of how safe this city is, because of the men and women of the police department. And chief, I thank you, I thank them, and it's a great day for our city and the police department that we can move forward and have a contract that works for both groups. And the best thing for me, being an accountant, we fixed the pension we needed to be fixed, and to me, you know, it's all in that salary increases that we never gave, so it's costing us a little bit more money, but, you know, we didn't even raise it last year, so it's, it's a great thing. Thank you, and, and thank you for all that you've done for us. You, you basically know the issues that we've had economically, and you stepped up to the table and helped us. You deserve the accolade and the thanks, so on behalf of the residents, I wanna thank you for doing all that you've done. David, what's your comment?
It's a good contract. I'm, I'm very happy with the contract, I'm very happy with the direction that we're going, and honestly, our police are with truly the best. It's the best department here, and we, they deserve to be compensated appropriately, and I think that this does that.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I'm glad that we, everybody was able to work together and come to the common ground, and I think it's well-deserved, absolutely, so thank you very much. And I, I agree with Joe and David, we have the best police department, and they definitely need to be compensated for it, that's for sure.
And I'll finish up by saying thank you. Really, the whole city had to come, come together as a team, and you guys were certainly part of that, making your concessions over the last three or four years to kinda help us get through this budget crunch, and we know we have a lot of guys in the drop plan, maybe a third of the department over the next three to five years, it'll be gone, so we had compression issues, we worked on that, I think we wanna promote them, but then, elevate, we wanna, we wanna hire new qualified candidates to start when other people move out, and I think we've set all that in motion to make it work, so tremendous effort on your part to work with us, and now we've got a three-year deal, which is, is pretty nice for everybody involved, and certainly is gonna help us and make us continue to be probably the safest city in this county, if not the state, for the efforts that you do proactively and policing on a day-to-day basis, so thank you for your efforts, and we appreciate it. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back up for a vote.
With that, I'm going to be happy to make the Resolution fourteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Got a motion, two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have items for council action and discussion, the fortieth terrace and Sunset Drive infrastructure improvements survey, updating discussion, please.
Good evening, Council, Tom, a little city engineer. At the last meeting on our, on our second survey that's required for our plan, we had about thirty, or forty-two percent reporting. You directed us to go back out and try to get more, at least in the sixty percent range. We now have sixty-three percent of the property owners reporting on, on the second survey. A little bit of the results, fifteen of the overall property owners said yes, they want everything, which represents about thirty-eight percent. Thirteen said they want water only, which is about thirty-three percent, and eleven wanted no improvements whatsoever, and that was, that represents about twenty-eight point two percent. We discussed before, at the last meeting, the very northern property, that, those five properties are their land trust, owned by the same property owner, and they currently do receive water, so there, they have voted no for no improvements, and the rest are scattered throughout the property. The Sunset Home, they did a board action, we discussed at last meeting, they did analysis, and found it was actually cheap for them to go with all the improvements that they voted for, all the improvements. So what's our next step? Would be to hold a public informational meeting, a few directed us to do so, we'd like to do that on March twenty-fourth of this month, and that would be held with the staff here in the council chamber between six and seven-thirty. There'll be an open forum, and all the property owners, residents, come in, ask anything about the project and financing, to how the assessment's gonna work, how the construction process is gonna work, any other questions they have. After that, we'd like to put that back to you in a public meeting, actually a public hearing on April third, and invite the property owners as well to enter at a public meeting, and then you can make the determination as a council.
If I may clarify one point, when Tom speaks of a, a open house from six to seven-thirty, they'd come anytime during that period, if not a presentation, question-answer, there'll be tables and stations set up, so they would go, ask, take their questions on finance, water, sewer, road, so to get their questions answered individually if they need to. So just to clarify, it's not a presentation from six to seven-thirty.
And how we, how they're gonna be notified? Are we sending out letters this week for that meeting?
Yes, we'll send out, that's what you gave us the direction, we'll send out letters to the property owners.
Okay. And if we, I would send, if we go forward with this tonight, and we'll send out a letter, and send a follow-up letter as well?
Yes.
Following week, let's just get as much mail as we can out there to try to get the people in here for that presentation.
Yes, and we're gonna put a webpage up on the website as well.
Oh, great, okay.
Try to give as much information, any emails I receive from the property owners, they'll send us that email. A few of the property owners are out of state, and I don't expect them to attend without even having to share the information with, with the meeting within.
Yeah, we could send out a file of information to them or something after the meeting's over, I just to let them kinda know what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you, great. Okay.
Now, the five properties in the northeast corner that are receiving water, why are they a part of this?
When the dive shop was built, as Seacoast required, and Seacoast was required to build the water main to their furthest edge of the property line, so that put an eight-inch force range for a water main right there, so they tied on to that and then backfed the other one, all their other lots, so they're not legally hooked up, Seacoast is aware of the situation, but as we continue to run that water main down the street, which is gonna be required to make the loop, they'll have to pay for their improvements, just like they would've had to anyway. So it's, they have one legal property, and the rest are backfed off that same meter. Seacoast, like I said, Seacoast is aware, and Seacoast, it was Seacoast that came, forced a native to pay their fair share as that name goes down.
I see that they're one of the no improvements, probably because of that. However, will we talk to them about the opportunity of possibly doing a unit of entitlements so that they would have one, you know, combining all the lots together, in a legal way?
We have not had that discussion with them, I had several discussions early on in the process, and they just did it early on.
Does that might help them change their mind, to make it a, instead of a no, to make a yes vote, more than if they, they might not be aware that that's a possibility?
They have to do it max for the legal side of that, but.
Sure.
As far as Seacoast is concerned, they need to pay for what goes in.
Right, absolutely. I, I would move forward with the workshop, I think it's great, get as many people there as possible, and hopefully we can help educate them on the pros and cons and move forward.
Yeah, I was hoping for a bigger number, but I know Kevin, he's been out there trying to get responses, and so we'll go with the sixty-three percent, but essentially, we have at least twenty-eight that would be acceptable for water, so that's, that's a positive number, I think, to work off of, trying to get that here.
We also could possibly get more after the workshop, there might be more people that would come and learn, and turn into a, a much higher response as well.
Which would be nice.
That would be great.
Todd, you need a motion, right? Can you put the dates up on the board again? I would like to make a motion that we hold a public information meeting on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, from six PM to seven-thirty.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Couldn't get going on there. Thank you. Next up, city attorney report, do we have one? Okay. Motion, adjourned?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.